All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Planning Board Meeting Tuesday, April 7th, 2020. I'm going to read the Governor Baker's statement first. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Town of Norton Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right or requirements to attend this meeting can be found at the Town of Norton's website at www.nortonma.org. In this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen to the meeting may do so by dialing (978) 990-5000 and entering the access code 753867, unprompted. You may need to call multiple times to connect. I don't think that's been a problem tonight. While it's not necessary, it is recommended you download the FreeConferenceCall.com app to your mobile phone and use the call using Wi-Fi or data option. You may also view the meeting on Norton Cable Access Channel 15 or the next day on the Norton Media Center's YouTube page. No in-person attendance and members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real-time via technological means. In addition, please feel free to email any questions to the Board head of the meeting or during the meeting to pauldudussepe@p-dudussepe@p-d-i-u-s-e-p-p-e@nortonmaus.com. Additionally, you can find meeting materials at www.nortonma.org/Planning/Dashboard. I'm not going to read that whole thing. Okay. You're finding the Planning Board website. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real-time. In the event that we're unable to do so despite best efforts, we'll post on the Town of Norton website at www.nortonma.org. An audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceeding as soon as possible thereafter. I do have to enough, also there was an issue last meeting where people had their speaker phones on. I'm getting a lot of feedback right now, so can everyone mute their phones? Anyone on the phone right now with a speaker phone, please, please mute it. Okay. So moving on to the... Paul, are you here? Can you tell who's doing that call on your end? Because I can't even hear anything.
I'm not, I'm not hearing anything, although I, I, Orin has emailed me that he's having technical problems.
Okay.
He has the right access, the number and access code, so I don't know what's going on.
If someone's downloading the app, there may be a mute function in the app as well, so if someone is using the app, just double check that.
So the feedback I was getting before is gone, so whoever hit the mute, thank you very much. We appreciate it. It's what I was saying, Paul, do you want us... We have, we have one bill tonight?
We have one bill. Yes.
Do you want to go through that?
Certainly. Um, sorry, let me, I'm just trying to make my way through. The bill is actually for work that you all haven't seen yet, but this is regarding a peer review from Amory Engineering. They're a peer reviewer doing stormwater review for the Ten Commerce Way Special Permit and Site Plan that came in right around the time that the Governor was issuing the state of emergency and they are, they, uh, this was submitted by Condyne and they've agreed to an extension, they voluntarily agreed to an extension, but we've been continuing to work with the peer review, or they've been continuing to work with the peer reviewer. And so this is for engineering work that has been, and I can confirm that they, they have provided initial comments to the applicant that the applicant is now working on. So this bill for $429 is for the stormwater work that they were, uh, that they've already, that they've already completed.
Okay. So anyone have questions on the bill? All right. So when we do, um, sorry, this is shot, I just wanted to confirm. Motion second. I think Tim, was that you?
I motioned, yes.
Okay. I'll second. Okay. Um, you'll, you'll recall votes, so, uh, who, Tim? Julie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Um, do we have Orin on yet?
No, he just, he just emailed again. He's still trying, but he's getting the same recordings, so, um, I, I, I'm not sure what's, what's going on there. Uh, I'm going to re-mail to him and see if he downloaded the app.
Yeah, maybe have him just call the number instead, um, to give that look for me, I think. Um, and I'll vote yes on that bill as well, so it's, uh, happy for sure. Uh, next we have the meeting minutes from last meeting, uh, March 24th.
Can you hear me, Paul?
Oh, hey, Orin, how are you?
Okay.
That's Orin.
I got the link that you, you sent me. It's working now on my cell phone.
Okay, great.
All right. Hey, Orin, um, did you check out the bill?
That's fine.
Okay.
Yes, that, that's fine.
About 4:20 minutes, we, we just took the vote, so, um, do you want to enter your...
Yes, I agree as well.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Um, can I show you the minutes? Um, I just had two, uh, two that I saw, and my vote wasn't taken down on a couple of of these, and I have, um, both of them, uh, were yes. So Nicole, you have that?
I'll look at it and change it.
Okay. It was for the, uh, motion to approve special permit, um, there's no vote recorded to me, and, um, but it was yes, and the next one was for gas stations on trade, uh, it was yes.
The gas station one too, okay.
Yeah.
Nicole, on the motion to endorse the A and R, I believe I voted no on that, you have me at yes.
Okay.
Does anyone have any other, um, can do the corrections on that?
Um, just a quick, on the, on the, the vote, there's two votes, one of which, um, I think it's the same vote on the special permit. It's done twice, and the one you have is a no, and the other one you have is no answer. Is that just an extra? Something wrong with that? The print that I got, it has two motions, motions to approve, and it has one where Steve votes no, and then the other one where Steve is blank.
On which one here? Um, oh, the one that I voted no was to proppellity.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I just, yeah, I just went over the ones where it was blank.
Okay.
Because there's another one that, that I'm blanked on too.
Okay.
And this is Joe, uh, maybe for purposes of clarification and that's highlighted, uh, I think looking for a second, I can't remember who seconded it, but it probably should read that motion made by Mr. Griffin, that the overall sign height, so there's no confusion as to, we were talking about building or anything else, we're talking about the sign.
Oh, yeah.
And again, I don't remember, I don't remember who seconded it, and if you need a victim, I'd be glad to be the victim, but...
I don't have those notes with me, but, um, I can check my notes, Nicole, uh, when I go to my office tomorrow.
That would be great, because I had Steve written down twice that he motioned and seconded, so I knew that couldn't be right, so, thank you.
What if this I could have?
And I just fixed everything else, so I'll have those up for you guys, and then Steve can give me that, it'll be all set.
Okay. All right, anything else on this case? All right, you're on that, and I'll make some little progress into a grade.
Uh, this is Joe, I moved to approach the minutes of, uh, the 24th.
Would you like to second?
This is Tim, I will second.
Thank you, Tim. Uh, any further discussion in a minute? So, all right, we'll go down the line, Tim?
All right.
Julie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Okay. Orin?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Okay. Moving on to, um, SP 490, it's, uh, Southwest Street, Weyman River State, uh, the applicant has requested a continuation to April 28th. So Paul, you, you spoke with them?
We have a letter from them, they dated April 1st, sits in Dropbox, but I should also point out, um, we did receive new legislative, uh, that, uh, I have to get to you all, Steve, as it, but it's essentially placing a freeze on, uh, looking hearings, uh, for special permits, variances, and so forth, so it's, some will have to decide, uh, but they're asking to be continued. They, they knew that this was, uh, that signing orders, so, um, should, I believe, if you want to have it on the, until after, you know, to be consistent with, of a nurse's recommendation order.
Okay. Did anyone else get, um, any break up, any more Paul has seen here?
Yeah, this is Joe, I, I couldn't hear him.
Okay, yeah, I wanted to make sure it wasn't my phone before I said that, so yeah, um...
Yeah, I didn't hear any of that.
Okay, well, I'll just quickly say that they're asking to, to be continued to the 28th, but, um, when they asked for that request, the Governor and the Commonwealth hadn't made a decision yet on essentially freezing special permits, variances, and so forth during the, uh, state of emergency. They have done so now, so you do have the ability to not take this up until after the Governor lifts the state of emergency.
So moving into 28, if it, if it, we're able to lift that before then, then we can take it on, if not, we, we will just continue at that point.
Right.
Paul, is it our discretion, or is it, it is frozen as the law of the land for now?
Um, we have it, um...
This is David Dineski, I will, it's okay if you want to...
Thanks, Dave.
There is a sort of blanket, um, freeze or extension, if you will, under the legislation, but in this particular instance, if it's the applicant who's making the request, that would be something that the Board could act on in the ordinary course aside from the state of emergency, so I wouldn't see that there's an issue there if it's the applicant's request.
So if, if that's, just to add to that, if, um, if that's still not lifted by the Governor by April 28th, would we be required to continue it further?
You're not required, it, it's optional to proceed if you wish, but the timelines for required completion of business are sort of frozen and then extended for 45 days after the state of emergency ends.
Okay.
And I, and please correct me again, this is Paul, um, is that you, if you decide to get it up, recommend against closing the public, because as, as we experienced in the meeting, there's technical difficulties, you, if you do want to hear it, just, you know, don't close it, because you, we don't want to run the risk of an open meetings violation.
All right, so we're looking at continuing this to April 28th?
Yeah, this is, you know, some of...
Thank you. You have a second?
This, Tim, I will second.
All right, is there any further discussion or questions? Okay, we'll go down the line again, clear?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Orin?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Okay. So SP 490 is continued to April 28th. All right. Next we have the 54 Plant Street, so the decommissioning and landscape surety agreement. And we're going to put it in Dropbox?
It's, it's in the Dropbox, uh, it's also, we also included the, uh, decommissioning report that you all accepted, um, as well as, uh, there were landscaping costs that they had submitted to me after, after the, uh, the, uh, we all approved the special permit and site plan. So I guess I should just start and, uh, I should, I, I, can I ask Chair, uh, is, is anyone, um, on the phone who's representing Madison Energy or NextGrid? Okay, I guess, uh, I wasn't sure if they were going to attend or not, but, um, so this agreement that you have in front of you comes out of, um, the, that special permit approval that, that the Board approved, um, back in 2019, and it deals with the decommissioning and the landscape surety. Um, Dave was, was brought on to help us draft this language, uh, that, um, uh, I, I, I had asked for his help because I wasn't confident that the most recent agreements, which were a few years old, be reflective of, of, you know, state law, you know, state law, they were changes of best practices, so Dave came in and helped us, uh, put this together. We worked, uh, made several edits working with the, with the applicant, but, um, Dave and I did ultimately agree to, to the language. Uh, I do want to point out, we actually do have the checks in, uh, they're with the Treasurer, uh, for both, uh, the decommissioning and the landscaping, uh, so those, I don't know that they've been deposited yet, but, um, we got this week for certain. Is there one to add to this?
Well, Paul, your phone's breaking up again, I think.
Oh, sorry. Do I need to, oh, Dave, Dave, do you want to explain any more about this?
I, I think maybe everyone got up to the point where Paul was saying that this is the product of back and forth between Paul and myself and, uh, the Madison entities, which did include, I think, one, maybe two passes, uh, through their legal counsel. I think, uh, in substance, it is the central form of the document that was originally created. They wanted a few items of clarification that, that we found acceptable. Um, I will point out that they did include, uh, language, uh, that has a waiver of a jury trial, typically not, um, common to this, but also for this kind of an agreement, you most likely would not want to be pursuing a jury claim anyway. Uh, so I think it's, uh, in an acceptable form, uh, and it was a way to cure the situation where we didn't yet have the rules in place that we'll be talking about next, but to simply reference the statute and then get the actual security deposited with the town.
Okay. So anyone have questions on this?
Uh, yeah, I do. But David's...
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I, I brought to Paul the tension, something that I spotted. If you recall, the original decommission agreement was in January of 2019, and in it they had salvage value, and they had, uh, reduction to salvage value. We pushed back on that, and the numbers that they submitted in the March 4th one did reflect the correct numbers. The problem that I have is in looking, and we can look at that, that same proposal. That proposal talks about still dismantling, demolition, and disposal or recycling, and it says, due to the resale market value, these components will be dismantled, disassembled, and recycled, rather than demolished and disposed of. And I don't know, I, my understanding is that's what we did want to have happen. Um, the numbers are correct, and my question to Dave and to Doris was, is there something in, in the agreement that we can make clear that we're, that it's there, we can do it, but we're not going to be obligated in all instances to dismantle, uh, dispose, or recycle, um, this material? Because that's what we had agreed to, and I'm not sure if there's a way now to do that, and that's what I was supposed... The numbers are correct, the new numbers are right, we have no problem with that. It's just inherent in the original description that's, that's incorporated into the agreement is the plan, and the plan calls for, as I said, requiring that we don't demolish and dispose of, but we recycle where we can. And I didn't want to...
This is David, and FBI had sent an email, uh, earlier today because, uh, Paul had forwarded this question. Uh, is, is that something that you had received, Orin?
Yes, I, I did. And I'm questioning the amount, the number, it's not the issue. The issue is the...
Right, so...
Mandatory recycling.
The, the decommissioning plan specifies what the applicant or now, uh, special permit holder's approach to decommissioning is, and the agreement says that if they don't follow their plan and decommission, that the town may utilize the security that's deposited in order to remove the facility. And the agreement is fairly, um, bare, if you will, in that respect, saying that the town may remove. I don't read it as the town having to take into account any effort for salvage or recycling or whatever. It's really, it's a deposit of money for the town to remove the facility from the site. And then the, the third component, if you will, of that monetary arrangement is that if the special permit holder does in fact remove the facility and does so as required and in accordance with the plan, and that is confirmed by the town's consulting engineer, then they do receive the deposit back. But I, I don't construe this agreement, and I didn't take any of the Madison comments to suggest that this agreement was more than just a financial means, if necessary, to the town to take the facility off the site.
The, the other problem with that, uh, is it's not the agreement itself, it's the plan itself, and I think at the time, we were just focusing on the number, and we just looked back at the language in the plan, because the language in the plan says we have a duty to decel for monetary value and recycle, uh, rather than demolish for disposal. The applicant did agree to take that salvage value, so the number's correct, and I thought it, it's actually correct, the same would apply to the agreement. I realize that's what's in there now, and I didn't know if there's any address to that, but I think the parties were in a zone that we would be required to, um, to recycle or provide salvage material. That's what they were doing, but I think the number's correct. The plan doesn't show that.
But I, uh, this is Paul, um, but neither the agreement nor the, nor the decommissioning report puts that onus on the town to actually do that. I mean, we have, we have...
I think, I think it does. It says, says, "Due to their resale monetary value, these components will be dismantled, disassembled, and recycled, rather than being demolished and disposed of." That's in the decommissioning plan.
But I believe that's by the applicant.
I would agree.
Orin, you said, you said the number is correct, correct?
That's right.
So worst case, the town has enough money to decommission it, and whatever, if there is salvage value associated, then the town can recycle that as appropriate?
Take the extra, uh, take the extra return.
The, the, the whole idea was for us not to be obligated to seek out alternate sources to try to deposition this material. We're not in the business of doing that. We give them every opportunity to take it down and deal themselves. If it gets to the point where we're responsible for doing it, um, then we just don't want to, we won't just take it out. We don't want to have to be shopping around and have a duty to do that. And granted, if that's what was in, that was devoted to the decision, so I don't know whether we can change that. That's the only, I was just raising the question as to whether you can clarify that.
It tells me that we're responsible for that, though.
Well, let David respond to that.
Yeah, I, I read that language as simply a description of what they would do when they decommission, and I don't see that as being an obligation of the town or the Planning Board in the first instance, or one that would become an obligation of the town or the Planning Board by reason of using the, uh, security deposit.
Okay. Does anyone else have questions on this?
This is Tim, so I guess, just to clarify, the reason this kind of went back and forth through the wringer a little bit, because we didn't have a surety policy in place, which we're going to talk about shortly.
Correct. Well, that's part of it, come to Paul, I'm sorry. No, no, that, that, that's, that's correct, that was a, that's a part of it.
Okay, Paul, you blanked on...
No, I, I, I was just saying that, that, that we, this issue was, um, you know, one of the, you know, one of the factors that we didn't have a policy, and, uh, you know, fortunately, you know, Dave has, you know, an awful lot of experience, uh, but interestingly, you know, they, Madison did their research and found it, because, you know, this, this policy in the state, the state law has been around for a few years. We've issued these agreements before, but we didn't, we never had the language, but they spotted it as well, so, um, we just saw this as an opportunity to fill that gap in, to, to, for the, on the next agenda item, to get, to get the, uh, to get the policy language approved.
Paul, did they give you the full argument, $6,000, or they looking to, to, to rotate that up as opposed to one? Did they give you the full amount?
Full amount for both.
Fine, okay.
Yeah. You know, they were, I don't want to, you know, this, this is what took a while for us to even get to this point, because they were wanting to do other options as opposed to paying us in cash, but, uh, I should point out, the Treasurer was very clear about this, that she will only accept cash for, for surety... that she will only accept cash for surety. She will not manage if it's an insurance bond or, you know, a letter of credit or anything like that. So it's much easier for the town to manage it when it's an account, much more difficult if it's something else.
I think that's another reason for the back and forth.
That was a big reason, but I don't want to, they ultimately came around, and they've been working in good faith, and I just want to keep that momentum going forward. But that was a reason it took so long to get to this point.
This is David. I could add what I think was probably the main point for insertion of additional descriptive language, and that is that under the power purchase agreement, the town does have a right to purchase the facility. So the Madison folks inserted language to make the point that if the town did that, it would then be the town's facility, and Madison would not then have the obligation to decommission it. So that's a fact that existed in the larger universe of things that relate to this project, and it was just added by reference to the agreement.
Would they decommission it or negate our vote to purchase it after we decommission it?
I don't have that agreement, but typically, if you were going to exercise a right to purchase, you would do that, and it would be established prior to the point in time where decommissioning is required. This, this security agreement is not going to affect the town's ability to exercise that purchase right if it chose to do so.
Okay, so do we need to vote to approve, please?
Yes, and Chair, you would end up signing it after a positive vote.
Okay. So can we do it individually?
Tim, I would motion to approve. Paul, just a quick process check, if I may.
Sure.
Is this the first time that this agreement has been in front of the board? Or is there any concerns for voting restrictions for any members that weren't here during that program?
Okay, Dave, I should point out, there were a couple of members on this board who were not on the board when they approved a special permit.
I don't think that that would affect the ability of members to vote, because the issue of being in attendance for a hearing is now gone, because that hearing process is concluded. This is more of an administration task, carrying out an activity, the preparation or the table setting for which already took place.
Thanks for the clarification, David.
We should do this separately, so Tim, do you want to have your motion for the decommissioning plan?
I think, move to, do we want to approve them separately? I was going to approve them as one surety agreement package.
Okay, yeah, I'm okay, okay.
Do you want to re印test to the record?
Yes, please.
I would move to approve the surety agreement for, let's see, for Plan Street.
Okay, you have a second?
This is Joe, I'll second. Again, just a clarification, that's for both the landscape plan and the decommissioning plan.
Correct. That was a, your motion, motion and second. Let's go down the line again, Kim? Kim? Come back to me. Jury?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Got it.
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Orin?
Yes.
I'll vote yes, and Tim, do you have?
Let me see if I can see what happened to him.
Okay. Well, it is motion, so I'm assuming you voted yes, but I don't hear it from anyone.
He is not showing up on the list now.
Okay. Oh, you have to pass the check to the other than anything.
He's not, he's, I'm told got dropped, it looks like. It's like he was dropped from it.
Hi, this is Tim, I'm going to kick off.
Okay, Tim. Okay, we just finished the vote, we just need yours.
I would vote yes on my motion.
All right. I'll send you there, okay. All right, and now we have the discussion on the surety policy.
Dave, do you want to run with that?
Sure. So this is a document that I tried to create in a general enough way that it was straightforward, but also, at the same time, in addition to being available for the planning board, being usable for other land use boards to the extent that they would have deposits under this statute. So as the sort of rundown, there are six elements or checkoffs that are under Section 53G and a half that should be included with any rule or regulation or bylaw for the treatment of security. The first is what's the type of security? And that is addressed in Section 3 of this draft. And just as a quick backtrack, the introductory paragraph and Section 1 or Section, and Section 2 are just sort of explanatory of what these rules are intended to address. Now, going from Paul's comment previously, there would be a question in Section 3 about the type of security that's permitted. And I think I heard Paul say that there would be a town, if you will, view that we should only be accepting deposits. And the rules are drafted a little bit more broadly. They do exclude specifically letters of credit, because I understood the treasurer would not want to be administering that. But they would provide for a surety bond arrangement. So if it's the case that the town, if you will, view and policy is that we should only have deposit of money, then that's an area that we would want to modify. And I think there are also other provisions. For example, in the very introductory paragraph, we speak to negotiable securities or other financial guarantees. So if it's really going to be just limited to cash or deposit of money, that's a policy discussion for the board. Those edits or revisions would be easily enough made, but that is a substantive element that would need to be addressed. The next item that is to be addressed under the statute is what do you do with any earnings or interest that are accruing on the deposit that's made? That's addressed also in Section 3 of the draft rules. The next item is what is it that's required of an applicant or a permitee that submits a deposit? And what are the standards for completing the work in question and to determine if it's a default? And those subjects are addressed in Sections 4 and 5. The next item is what is the procedure to return the deposit to the applicant? And Sections 5 and 6 address that. It's essentially a review and determination in the planning board discretion that the work has been satisfactorily completed. The fifth item under the statute is how is the deposit to be treated in the event that there is a determination that the permit holder has defaulted? And that's addressed in Section 5. The sixth item under the statute is sort of a catch-all, which is typical of these kinds of lists. And that's just any other conditions that would be included for compliance. There isn't a real sort of catch-all section in the rules. I don't think you need one. There are a few other, maybe clauses or sentences that might fall under that heading. But I view we have in this draft set of rules touched on all those subjects that's necessary to require for inclusion.
All right, does anyone have questions on this?
This is Tim. I guess, going back to the policy on cash or bond, I guess, I guess I'm not in a position to, I don't feel like I'm in a position to help or like to do. I think I would rather leave it open to, leave it open to the possibility of a bond in the case, in the event one made sense, rather than specifying cash at the statute level. That's my preference.
Actually, I agree. I know most, most retailers really encourage them how to put up a great deal of cash. They'd rather put up some security with this cash flow strategy. Is there somewhere we could say that it's cash? Or at the election of the town, they could provide other securities? Is there some way that the primary is cash? And I understand from the town's point of view, cash is a lot easier to deal with. But from trying to encourage businesses, businesses coming in with the kind of cash that they're looking for aren't, they really, sometimes they really resist it. So if there's a way in a right situation, we might want to be willing to accommodate them. I'd like to see it put into that as possible as an alternative. But that's the board, that's the election of the town. But if the primary is in cash, or at an election, they could allow it to be. Something like that, I don't know if that works.
This is David again. The way the rules are drafted, they don't specify what a particular deposit or security in a particular application must be. They're broadly worded to cover those kinds of security that are permissible. And as worded, it's really only the case that we are excluding a letter of credit. But other forms would be permissible under this draft, and they would address that, the concern that I think two of the members have expressed, that there'd be some flexibility. And the particular form of security for any individual application would be something that would be a matter of discussion between the board and the applicant. What the rules do do, again, is they rule out of the scope of possibility a letter of credit, but they leave open other means in addition to cash. And I would agree, not all developers will have large amounts of cash.
Which was actually the big issue with NextGrit, was that, was the $100,000 plus. They really struggled with that, and that's why they were trying to seek out other options.
Dave, this is Joe. Dave, I've got a question. One of the concerns I've had in the past with bonds is if it's a long-term project, you know, the permitee can provide a bond first year, there's no issue. But the town has no assurance that the permitee is going to reissue that bond. You know, we may know that it's up for renewal, but how do we assure that it's going to, the permitee is going to repay the, once again, pay the premium on the bond?
That is something that does require some monitoring. But if an applicant or permitee didn't pay a premium, that's something where the surety would need to be giving notice that it doesn't have the premium paid and any beneficiary or obligee under a bond, or any bonds that that particular principal had given were then being called or canceled on certain days' notice. So there is some level of monitoring with a bond, but probably similar, or quite similar, I would say, to a bond that you might get.
Well, I'm having a hard time hearing you, but, again, if, if the bond is due, it's a one-year bond and it's due February 1st. But we know that it's due February 1st, but if the premium isn't paid by the permitee, what recourse does the town have other than paying the premium itself?
Well, depending on where you are in the project, it could be unfortunate notice to this, like, we could get, you know.
I don't need to interrupt. I don't need to interrupt, but if people aren't speaking, can you please just mute your phones? We're getting a lot of feedback here. Thank you very much. You can go ahead, I'm sorry about that.
Sure. It wouldn't always be the case, at least in my experience, that the bond is going to have a premium amount that has to be refreshed, if you will, annually. Depending on what the obligation and the term of the obligation is, the premium may be set to run the course of the term of the bond. That can depend from project to project. But there's always some level of monitoring that does need to take place if it's not just handing over cash.
Thank you.
Are there anyone else with questions on this?
Yeah, two other questions. David, is there any statutory obligation relative to interest that we have, that has to be provided in case it's going to be an interest-bearing account?
The statute just says how the interest is going to be treated. And I think, based on prior communications that Paul and I had with the treasurer, the practice has been, in other instances where the town has taken a deposit, and I'm not sure what those might be precisely, but that they have been placed in an interest-bearing account. And I think that most likely, if anyone's going to provide cash, they would want to have the benefit of the interest if they comply with the terms of the obligation, so that they would have that at the end.
Any required interest that has to be paid? I know at some point, there used to be some minimum requirements. I don't know if those exist. I really doubt it, but I'm just curious if there was any.
This particular statute just requires for a deposit in a special account, and then it's like, whatever rules you, meaning municipalities and the commonwealth have, you should include in those rules what happens with any earnings that come about from holding the deposit.
The other question I had was, and that's back to the board. In Number 6, we have a 30-day window to basically give notice of the lack of performance. Is that something? Is that something, and I'm just thinking of the array of things in my encounter, that we may need to bring in some peer review to determine, and is 30 days enough time for us to make that declaration of what's missing to satisfy the requirement?
I mean, is that language standard across? I don't know that there's a particular standard, if you will, and this is sort of an aside too, and maybe harks back to where we started the meeting. I suspect that the situation of not having these rules is not unique to your board or the town. The statute's relatively new, and I don't know that there's a universal, and I'm fairly certain there's not, universal adoption of these kinds of rules or regulations. So there may be others where it needs to happen as well. You could certainly change that time period if it's completely within your discretion. You could make it 45, you could make it 60.
Again, this is Joe. I had a concern with that 30 days, particularly when it comes to summertime meetings when we may only meet once a month. If for some reason, you know, a project asks for their performance bond to be released the day after a meeting, and then we're not meeting for 30 days, and then we don't have a quorum for whatever reason. Personally, I'd like to see that at least 45 days. We could certainly act sooner, but I wouldn't want to lose by default simply because we couldn't physically need a 30-day notice.
Yeah, I'd be okay with 40 days on that. What does everyone else think?
Well, and the only other thing, and I don't know that it would have any legal ramifications, but we require a certified mailing. Couldn't a permitee also provide notice to the town clerk in person? A written notice?
You can adjust. These are all things that you can make more or less strict.
I'm just thinking that, if you're in the case of a small, you know, deposit or security, that, you know, why don't we make someone go through a certified mailing when they could just come to the town clerk and submit a written request?
Joe, do we have, members of the board, are there other things that would, that would require some peer review to make a determination? I'm thinking of some of the things we've just recently done, some of the sound, we had sound certifications and stuff like that, that they come in, they say, give us back for landscaping or whatever, I don't know, I just, that's the question, if we require a peer review to confirm that something's done in a particular way. And I don't know specifics offhand, I'm thinking of, I'm just trying to think out loud as to what other possibilities we might encounter.
This is Tim. I think my feeling is, Aaron, if we needed, thought we were going to need peer review on something, we should build that into the agreement that we make with the applicant.
And this is Paul, just adding to what Tim said. That's exactly what you did with 54 Plain Street. You required an engineer to authorize or agree to the decommissioning.
Okay, so they would have to, have submitted that peer review to basically qualify, to get their request for it. And if they hadn't given us that certification, I guess, they haven't gotten a peer review, they haven't satisfied that requirement. Just a quick one. By us approving this, does that affect the issue that we have outstanding with Fuller Street in terms of their request? Would this be retro, this, basically, it's been more than 30 days since they put in their request? Would this retroactively apply to that request?
Unless they do it by.
Okay.
Anyone else with questions or comment on this?
In the thing, there was something called revision one and revision two. Is that the same thing? I got two things under the rules. One, the revision one, that they looked like was the same document.
I think one was a PDF.
Okay.
I could be wrong. I only created one version. This is David again.
Okay.
Yeah, one was a doc, and another was a PDF.
Okay.
So what do we think until, are we thinking about adopting these with, I think the suggestion was changing that to 45 days?
This is Joe. The three revisions I'd like to see is the 45 days, the ability to provide notice to the town clerk in writing, and the ability to provide a bond.
The ability to provide a bond exists under the, that's present.
Right, but just so that's clear, because we've obviously had a discussion that it be cash only, but I think in certain cases, a bond is, is going to be a key provision for some developers.
They still ask for a bond.
Right.
So there wouldn't be a change to that?
Well, it's not so much a change, those were three points.
Can whoever was on speaker please mute their phone? There we go. I'm sorry, Joe, go ahead.
That's right. I understand that the only two changes would be that I'm suggesting the 45 days and provide notice to the town clerk as an option, as long as it's understood that the bond provision remains.
Okay, yeah, I understand.
And I'll make that as a form of motion, that be approved of those two changes.
David, a question. With language as drafted, in this particular case, as in the case of 54 Plain Street, with this language, could they have said, a bond, we would be obligated to take a bond, or is it your position that that would be still our call, that we could require just cash?
In this instance, the determination of what form of security will be acceptable is part of the permit process itself. I think that's how you would treat it. You would establish in a permit that you issue as part of the conditions what's acceptable as security. And these rules just say that when you have any of the acceptable forms of security, here's what you do to handle them, administer to them, and then return them if the applicant complies with all the obligations.
Okay. So we should be, we should, we need to address that in our decision itself. We should, to be clear, to be able to facilitate that.
And that's probably something, and I expect you do this already, have that kind of dialogue with an applicant before you close a public hearing, so you're aware of any issues that may be particular to an applicant's financial position or structure or flexibility. I assume the motion on the table, Joe second?
This is Tim. I will second Joe's motion to make those two changes.
It's to approve this, with those two changes?
My second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, Tim?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
And Albert, yes. Excellent. Thank you very much.
And thank you, David, for all your.
Oh, you're welcome, you're welcome. Yes, thank you, David. I think that's all we have to tell you, right? We did have a, really quickly, we did, we added a meeting in, and there was talk for next Tuesday. What are folks' thoughts on canceling that meeting? The reason we added it in was due to town meeting coming up, and we had a crammer lock into quite a few meetings, so at this point, it's not really needed.
Do you establish a gender with any applicants?
Was anything that was continuing to that date?
No.
Nothing like that, I think. No, that was specifically to discuss the town meeting, that article, I believe.
So our next meeting would be the 28th?
Correct.
This is Joe, kind of related to this. We have, obviously, the IDC has the marijuana bylaw, zoning bylaw that's proposing. We have that Village Center bylaw. I don't know how we conduct public hearings in the truest sense of the word on those, on those two proposed bylaws, notwithstanding whenever a town meeting is going to be. Does it not make sense to defer any action on those two bylaws? Obviously, if the IDC agrees to the fall town meeting, then hopefully we're back to some semblance of normalcy.
I don't know if I necessarily defer to the fall meeting yet, but I think it's definitely a possibility, depending on how things are going each week.
Because that, that in part drives our, or had been driving, our meeting schedule.
Yeah, we have a meeting on the 28th and the 5th right now?
Yeah. Right. Right. And if I could just add, you know, as we've been, you know, having to play, you know, trying to figure out the schedule, we have actually printed up notices for the bylaws in anticipation of potentially having this on May 5th. But the idea that we could always send the notices out, and then on May 5th, you could continue to another date, but if we're to make that decision, we really need to make it soon because we have to get the notices out to the paper next week, and then that's...
How is the meeting after the 5th? I don't have that here for some reason.
I believe it.
It's the 19th? I have it on the 19th?
I believe it is. It was supposed to be the day after town meeting.
Okay. Did they, did they reschedule town meeting yet?
They did to June 8th, I believe.
Yes, June 8th.
June 8th. But again, that's all up in the air as well right now, so.
But, I'm sorry, again, this is Joe, particularly where, A, we have to spend a fair amount of money printing the proposed bylaws. We're not entirely going to be working on much of that in advance of the hearing, whenever that is going to be. I don't know about other folks tonight, but I've had a hell of a time trying to follow the conversation with, I assume, just the board members and a handful of other people listening in. I would think for a public hearing, if we were to try to do this remotely, it would be virtually impossible.
So what I would think, I mean, I would recommend, we push it to the 19th, and then our meeting on the 28th. I think, I think at the 28th, at the end of this month, we'll have a better idea of how things are going to move. And at that point, we can decide to push it to the fall or continue with it, or however, if they push town meeting even further, we can make that decision. I just don't want to jump to pushing it to the fall just yet.
Steve, can I just note, I have, we already have them printed, and there's about 1,500 of these notices, so it's not something, I've been working on it for a few days. It's going to take me a couple more days. So it's kind of like, this has to be out by, what is it, Paul, next Tuesday, I believe? So there's 1,500 of them. It's kind of like, if you guys want to, don't want me to send them, let me know now, because it is taking a lot of time to do them. So I just wanted to put that two cents in, so you know it is a lot of notices.
Okay. What is the other thing?
Are those notices just for our bylaw change, or the bylaw change for marijuana as well?
Those are just for marijuana. Marijuana itself has 1,500 notices, and they're double-sided, two pages. And I've already, you know, luckily, I've, my youngest son has been very helpful in stuffing these, but it's, we still have a ways to go, so I just want to, you know, if you don't...
Do we have any notice requirements for the Village Central?
Same requirements, those are, I have those ready to go, too. Those are being stuffed as well.
How, I'm sorry, to the 19th. I'm sorry, go ahead, Joe.
Well, the IDC is, has submitted the marijuana bylaw, so we have no choice but to schedule and hold a hearing unless they were to agree to put it off. I'm more concerned with what we have full control over, unless the Village Center District. My preference would be on both, to move them off to the fall, but, and as a practical matter, as long as we're kind of living in this upside-down world, I don't know that anyone's going to be, you know, making a lot of progress towards, you know, opening up a retail center for marijuana or doing anything in the Village Center District, but, so I don't see that we lose anything if we move to this to September, October. But my concern is, particularly if we're going to be sending out mailers for either one of these, that if we can push them off, it makes more sense, but that would require the consent of the IDC.
Even then, it may be, even if they went forward, having two of them on that, whatever it is, it's even to be more than that. So we'd probably be better off just bifurcating them anyway. So if we had to do them in some remote fashion, we weren't doubling up the problem by having two different series of bylaw amendments. And I agree with each other, I think that nothing will be lost in putting that over, and nothing's going to be coming forward that fast to be able to move that along.
And can I add, this is Paul, just, you know, looking, if you schedule the first meeting on May 19th, that's the only meeting you're going to have before the June 8th, unless you schedule it again for the next week. That's why we picked May 5th. That way, based on the existing schedule, you would have had an opportunity for two meetings. Get that, get that decision in before the, you can't make a change until you do it on the floor. So I would, again, everything's up in the air, it could, it might move from June 8th, but at this point, that's what we know it is, and May 19th would basically be it for you, if you went that route rather than May 5th. So just, you know, just bear that in mind.
This is Tim. I think I put more, I'm obviously not an epidemiologist or whatever I would need to be to know what's going to happen in the next few weeks, but I think that I would lean towards, if we're going to have meeting time, I think having potential meeting time on the 26th, if needed, before a June town meeting, makes more sense than meeting time next week.
Yeah, I agree, that makes sense.
The 26th on the 20th is crazy.
You're on agreement to cancel... You're, you're on agreement to, to, or to cancel next week's meeting? Uh, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
This is Scott. Yes, for me.
Yeah. And I think, I think maybe we should add one on the twenty-sixth, and we, we can push these to the nineteenth. Um, at least the marijuana bylaw one. I, I think that, um, I think we, we should go through with that.
But again, this is Joe. Uh, we, we don't have a choice, um, because if the, the IDC submits it, we have to have a hearing. Um, I, I would do, suggest two things, and one, I'm making the form of a motion afterwards, but I would ask you, Paul, to reach out to the IDC, and, because as we talked about, and since they're drafting it, um, you know, if, if there are issues with changes that have to be made on the floor, let the IDC suffer the consequences of that. But, um, in any case, there are steps that need to be met as part of a zoning change, and, you know, that's, that triggered our initial calendar. Um, you, we've got the notices that have to be sent out, the advertisement that has to be, uh, posted and paid for. Um, I, I would, I would suggest, Paul, that you reach out to the IDC, explain that, and, and suggest that they hold off on, on this, their bylaw until the fall town meeting.
Okay.
If they don't want to do that, then we have no choice. But I will move, um, that we, as the planning board, defer further action on the Village Center District, uh, until, um, appropriate for a fall town meeting. Okay.
All right, with motion second, is there, uh, any further discussion on that? I'll cut it out. Okay.
Um, I'll vote yes. I'm not sure what's gonna happen in the next few weeks, but talk crazy.
Julie?
I'll vote no, 'cause I think we should give it a few more weeks till we see what the board of selectmen do.
Kevin?
Ooh, tough one. Um-
What is it?
I, it is a tough, I, I'd rather defer to the board of selectmen, because they're the ones that decide on the town meeting, uh, dates and agendas and such, so I'm gonna vote no for that reason.
Scott?
I kind of agree with that logic, so, no.
Joe?
I guess.
Owen?
Yes.
Uh, and, and I agree with that logic as well. I'm gonna vote no, and, and see how, um, how the selectmen play this out. They, they, I mean, I, I have an inkling they might extend, uh, town meeting, but, but who knows? I think, so, so the motion failed, um, but I think we should add a meeting in, uh, as Tim noted, on the twenty-fifth and that. So, we have those two before town meeting, next town meeting goes forward on the eighth.
So, we're skipping the, the April twenty-eighth and the May fifth meeting?
Yeah, so I guess, then the other question was to move the agenda item from the fifth to the nineteenth, so that way Nicole doesn't have to get those out just yet, and if she gets more time, um, and, and the village board can more time to make decisions on how to move those. Is that makes sense to you?
Can I interrupt? It's Nicole.
Yeah, Nicole.
Um, so, if there is any way possible, 'cause I, I think me and Paul's kinda talked about it amongst ourselves, but if I, oops, sorry, I don't know what's going on. If I were to still send them out, because I have a couple hundred of them stuffed already, if I were to still send them out, you could, you could just continue it to the next meeting, and I only ask because I already have a couple hundred stuffed, so, um, I'd have to go into work, spend a couple hours to reprint them all out, and then do it all over again. So, I just wanted to let that be known. You guys, of course, whatever you guys decide, I'll do, but, um, just wanted to let, you know, that's kind of where I was at with it.
So, you wanna keep, keep those for the, whi-which ones do you have printed out of them?
We have the ones printed out, Paul. They're from May fifth, right?
We have them for, all of them, for the marijuana and the Village Center, and that other, the, uh, the language that deletes the requirement for signs when we rezone property. So, everything has been printed.
Yeah, and I have a couple hundred of them stuffed already, so-
Right.
I only ask if you guys would mind keeping it on that agenda and continuing it if you, if you didn't want to do it that day, simply because I've, I already have a lot of them done, and we already printed them all. So, it's fifteen hundred times, two pages each one.
Um, personally, I'm okay with that. Uh, I, I think we're gonna end up continuing it. Uh, well, I'm, I'm thoroughly certain we are, but, um, so, what does anyone else think?
When would those need to go out?
The date we have now is what, the twenty-eighth?
That's it.
I think it's May fifth. We haven't dated the May fifth.
Okay.
Again, we, we just picked that date because it gave you two meetings before the June, the, uh, the June eighth.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's fine. This is Tim. I think keeping it on the agenda is fine, and I think as they've all said, who knows what happens in the next few weeks, especially given that our deadlines regarding new filings are not necessarily kind of set in stone, that if things look like they're trending in the right direction, and we wanna talk about it at that meeting, we could do that.
This is Joe again, uh, and I'm not looking to beat a dead horse. Um, the, I'd be curious to know if someone, uh, could advise us, um, you know, typically, the, the notice gives time and date. Uh, if we're still in a position where we're, we're meeting remotely, does this notice have to provide for that information, i.e. the call-in number? Again, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not-
Joe, this is Paul. It does both. Uh, for May fifth, we have the media center, and we actually have the call-in number from a couple weeks ago, because I didn't have this number when we did. We, uh, so it does, it does that.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so, are we on the same page? We're, we're okay keeping it, and then, um, continuing it more than likely on the fifth? I'm gonna take the panel to the, so I don't think we need to vote, though, do you, Paul?
Uh, I, I don't, I don't believe you need to. I mean, you've given us clear direction on it.
Okay. Does anyone have anything else?
Somebody need to vote to cancel the, uh, four fourteen meeting? I don't think we did that.
Uh, I don't think so. Uh, you, you don't usually vote on meeting dates, do you?
No, you, you don't.
So, eh, oh, well, let's see, are there any objections to canceling the May fourteen, please? Uh, um, not May, I'm sorry, um, April fourteen. All right. So, if there's anything else, I think, uh, we could go, you know, next question.
Uh, Chair? Sorry.
Yes. Yep, yep.
Uh, did you want to discuss that spreadsheet?
Oh, my gosh. I don't know, I, that's written on there, yes.
Because adjourning is, like, is always on our minds, but, yeah.
Yes, 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 I think it-
Actually, Scott, do you want to lead the discussion?
Yeah, sure. So, um, in the drop box, you guys will see a issue conditions tracker. It's something that, uh, Chairman and Paul and I left to talk about, and this is just one recommendation, that if we choose to use it, we could. Um, we thought that as we go through an active public hearing, it'd be a good mechanism to identify, um, you know, certain items or issues, questions or conditions brought up either by board members, the public for further consideration, or an applicant. And then we can track those as we go forward to understand if they've been addressed or not. And then to close the public hearing, we could review this as a document to say, here's all the remaining items that have not been addressed, and we can do it prior to closing the public hearing, so that we have the ability to gather information from whatever source generated the issue or concern. Um, so, we've just kind of created as a template, um, the concept would be that, you know, one of us tracks it and loads it as we go through the meeting. Um, a blank template could also be provided to each individual board member for their review of notes on their own, uh, which then could be presented to the meeting to kind of walk through some of their thoughts and logic. Um, the first column identifies the item number, so we would just be able to, if these get printed or lodged somewhere, you could talk about them by orientation on the list. We would also include the meeting date in which the item was added, um, who the source of the issue question or condition was, what that issue question or condition is, and then at a later date, if it was addressed on the actual plan, so we can validate the change was actually made. And then if there is a condition that's needed to be written, we could include what that condition, those terms are, and also capture somewhat of a informal agreement. And then, uh, you know, then we can kind of track this as a revision document. I think it'll be a good way of consolidating some individuals' notes. May also help our, uh, our minutes be a little bit more, um, consolidated, and it'll give us a good effective way of closing our public hearing, where everyone's a little bit more aware of some of the hanging items that either a board member or the applicant has yet to, uh, respond to or raise. So, it's for proposal, doesn't have to be used, but, uh, we thought it may be something worth trying in the next full cycle that we go through, um, and it's there for everyone's review and, and consideration comment.
I, I think it's a fantastic idea. I, I think in one form or another, while making our own notes and tracking things, and, um, it's consolidated under one sheet, and it makes it a lot easier for, I think, everyone involved. Um, and, and the thought was to make it public, too, right?
Uh, yes. Uh, let the public see it, let the applicant see it, so it's their opportunity to use this as a way of responding to issues and questions, and then the public also will, uh, get a chance to, to track it as well.
Yeah, not that, not that much does, but it's giving the opportunity to keep things from, from the crux, not being reviewed.
Yeah, I mean, my opinion is it helps consolidate some of the information and puts a little bit of clarity there, so that if there's, you know, some logic or a condition that hasn't been addressed, it's a little bit more obvious than, uh, um, you know, perhaps how things have been tracked, um, in the past. I don't know, as any member of the board, but it's a proposal.
I, I like it, I like it for the, the public as well, because there could be something that we talked about, it was addressed immediately, and, uh, in, in one of the first meetings, and then there are four, five meetings down the road, and, um, we're not tugging about it because it's already been addressed, but the public can see, okay, this is on the sheet, they've already talked about it. It might eliminate some questions, it might answer questions before they even arrive, so, uh, yeah, I think overall, it's fantastic.
Yeah, and, and on the fly, there's usually, at, at times, some comments that are made, and it'll hopefully help us, you know, pause, capture them, so that we have some accountability to trace it back, just so we know and have that one source to go through, uh, versus consolidating a lot of meeting minutes, which, you know, we all do as well, so.
Yeah.
You know, it's, we try to keep it simple, so it doesn't become a, a bear of a tool to use, um, you know, and it's, it's can be fluid, so if we need to log file on the fly, we can, you know?
This is Tim. Uh, Scott, when you format this in Excel, is there a little bit of room for an extra, like, additional comments or notes column, or just in terms of a catch-all?
Oh, yeah, we can, we can add a column to it. I mean, it's just, we just quickly put it together, tried to keep it real lean and simple, just to get it as a concept. You know, we can, we can add a comment column on there, for sure. Um, yeah. You know, and the, and the working document, I don't think would be handwritten, right? The intent would be to capture it digitally on the fly.
Yeah, I only have notes sections to my, uh, Excel sheet, so, yeah, that was my thought was open. That's, that's an idea.
I hate putting things in the wrong column.
Yeah.
All right, so, yeah, so, the next, um, the next special permit's, um, no, nothing that we're already in the draft, but, um, any minute that comes up, we're gonna start using this, but, but, um, I don't, I don't know if we even need to vote on this, but, um, like Scott said, it'll be clear, that I mean, we find something works, something should be in there, or shouldn't be in there, or can change it, it's just kind of a looking, it's on a to-do sheet.
So, we start using this for waiting room once it comes back?
I mean, the, the thought we had on that was that we've already had some discussion and, and transfer of information, so there may have been things that, you know, aren't included on here. So, you know, I mean, we could consider it if people wanted to go back and validate all their notes and update this, but, you know, if we started with a clean, open, fresh public hearing, you know, that may be a better method for it, but, I mean, we can do it every wa- I, I don't think we need to do a vote, because it's no different than the notations that each of us take that we then consolidate later, so, um-
Well, it might be good to use individually through, through whatever, just, um, not make it, you know, public shared documents, um, just leave it at that, that, uh, do it in a, uh- That's my thought, yeah.
Well, it's in the drop box. If anyone hasn't seen it yet, you can take a look at it. Uh, I think we have some time before we kind of put it in motion. I'll keep it in the back burner in my mind when the next one comes up, and we can think about it again. But, uh, yeah, take a look. If there's any changes, you know, share them with Paul, we can always circle back on it. But, uh, yeah, you know, I don't, I don't think we need to make a mountain out of this one. It's pretty simple, pretty straightforward, so hopefully everyone finds it useful, and we can talk about it about.
All right, so, anyone with, uh, any questions? All right, now to my original request for, uh, for motion.
This is Scott, motion to adjourn.
Or second?
All right, motion second, uh, we're gonna get that, we're gonna, uh, go.
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Scott?
Yeah.
Joe?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Thank you all.
Thank you, David. You're welcome.
Good night, everybody. Have a good night, guys.
Have a good evening.
Good night, guys.
Good night, thank you. Thank you, and Paul.